All right, let's get started on our next item, five points two. It will be our North Bay Shore Precise Plan Transportation Plan update. I believe we have a staff presentation.
Thank you, good evening. This presentation is a further analysis of the North Bay Shore Precise Plan Transportation topics that we've been analyzing over the last several months. I'll be making the presentation tonight along with Dan Rubens from Fifty Years, our transportation consultant, and we also have Steve Rottenborn in the audience, who's our biologist from H.T. Harvey, and he'll be available to answer any questions related to biology. So, my presentation will focus on reviewing the key city council transportation questions that were the focus of this study. Then we'll have a summary analysis of the transportation topics in the staff report. Dan will cover that along with the TIA analysis from the EIR. And then we'll roll into the policy options and questions, and then conclude with next steps. So, just as a matter of review, the next few slides are the city council questions that form the focus of our transportation analysis. The first topic was live-work comparisons in terms of data of the proportion of live-work residents in similar communities in the San Francisco Bay Area or other urban areas, in terms of comparing those communities to North Bay Shore where we expect to have a significant number of new residents, and to try to determine what's the available data out there with regards to live-work percentages in these defined areas. And then looking at the estimated trip internalization rates for the different North Bay Shore land use scenarios that we've been analyzing. That is, what is that percentage of live-work that we see captured within North Bay Shore? And then the second main topic is regarding vehicle trip generation and gateway capacity. How do the different residential characteristics affect the amount of vehicle trips that are generated? How much do we need to adjust the land use and household characteristics in the plan to stay within the gateway capacity? Again, the gateway capacity is the amount of trips that capacity of those three main gateways that hit in North Bay Shore, Shoreline, Ranks Dorf, and San Antonio. And then how does the addition of new residential uses, again, the plan is proposing 9,850 new units, how does that addition of residential uses affect the gateway capacity? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to summarize the analysis of those first two topics.
So, the first question is about live-work, and the topic really is about living and working within the same geographic area. So, this table, and it's in your staff report as well, goes into several different geographic levels. You first have the city of Mountain View. We have other Bay Area communities that are kind of similar in size to Mountain View, other Bay Area neighborhoods that have a high jobs concentration, and then some very highly urban neighborhoods. And this is all coming from the census travel-to-work information. So, we have a common dataset that we can see and look to see if there's trends. And there actually are a few, but let's start with Mountain View. In terms of the city of Mountain View, the jobs to employed residents is about 1.6, and the current live-work percentage is 27 percent. So, 27 percent of people that live in Mountain View work in Mountain View. So, it's kind of a baseline number. Other communities, Bay Area communities of similar size, city of South San Francisco, city of Pleasanton, and Palo Alto have a range between 23 percent and 37 percent in terms of live-work percentage. So, for kind of complete communities of a similar size, that kind of gives you a sense of the range of the live-work percentage. For other Bay Area neighborhoods where you think of, you know, a lot of jobs like North Santa Clara, Mission Bay in San Francisco, downtown San Jose, Bishop Ranch in San Ramon, Redwood Shores, city of Emeryville, and North San Jose, which all have a very high jobs-to-employment ratio, 3.6 up to 8.6, tend to actually have a lower live-work percentage, and that range is about 13 to 26 percent. So, that kind of gives you a sense of complete community tends to have a range, 24 to 36 percent. If it's more kind of a jobs-heavy area, it has a bit lower percentage. Other places that you may think of that are highly urban neighborhoods, just to give you a sense of what might kind of the maximum be, downtown Oakland, San Francisco, downtown San Francisco, downtown Seattle, and lower Manhattan, they have a very broad range in terms of their jobs-to-employed residents, you know, level of density, but, you know, that range is essentially between 30 and 42 percent. So, it kind of gives you a sense of kind of the upper maximum of live-work percentages for representative communities and areas and neighborhoods that have a high jobs concentration. This is really important information when we talk about the study scenarios that we looked at. And so, this is looking at some of the specific study scenarios that we did. We did a group of kind of base scenarios, and for most of you, you're familiar with those, given the presentation we did in September of last year. And those were kind of the scenarios that I'll give in a little more detail in a moment, but they are more North Bay Shore. If you have a mix of residential units and a parking ratio, your jobs to employed residents are in that kind of three, jobs for employed residents. What we studied was, we looked at was a range from about 20 up to the 41 percent. So, you know, within kind of the established or the observed range of live-work percentage. We did some sensitivity tests, and here's the first group of those in the second half of this slide, where we look at the land use sensitivity tests. And this is where, with the kind of same groupings, I'll get into a little bit more detail about the scenarios in a moment, with the same kind of groupings, if you were to just add dwelling units until you reached gateway capacity, what the live-work percentage would be. And what you see is clearly a very high jobs-to-employed residence ratio, because we're adding somewhere between 500 and 3,000 dwelling units. And the live-work percentage is 47 to 63 percent. So, it's a higher range than kind of what's observed. And that has a lot to do with kind of overall affiliation in North Bay Shore. So, the first residents are more likely to work in North Bay Shore. So, the next two questions, I'll kind of address largely with this slide here. Again, this was in your present, in your staff report. And what you look at is each of these vertical bars is the total amount of traffic in the AM peak hour. So, it's the total inbound and outbound traffic, if you went to all three gateways and counted up for a single hour. Or a group of scenarios, the base scenarios here are in blue, the second set that I just showed with the gateway capacity or land use scenarios here, and then a tan group, which are referred to as kind of the household characteristics scenario. And I'll get into a little bit about what that means in a second, but what you can do is really kind of compare between each scenario, you know, the total number of trips. As you vary the residential type, you vary the number of dwelling units and the parking supply. So, on the far left here, and then you have a horizontal line that's the gateway capacity. And that's just, you know, four, three gateways, this is about the number of vehicles that you can get in and out of North Bay Shore in a single hour. On the very far left is what you have today. So, this is kind of your existing number. The next line is your adopted precise plan. So, if you build the additional 3.4 million square feet of office development, this is build up, or you can serve up to that level of vehicle trips. And then these four scenarios here are kind of the base scenarios that we looked at for establishing the transportation analysis. And what we looked at was standard dwelling units, just market rate apartment housing, 9,850 units with a parking ratio starting at 1.2. We varied each one of these a little bit, and what we landed on for, and this, we were going through this process about a year ago, as you were still working through what would be in North Bay Shore, the smaller units. So, this is the 70 percent studio and one-bedroom apartment, and then 30 percent two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments, so the smaller units, which really clearly defined at that point about a year ago. There was still a question mark around the parking ratio, you know, would it be more kind of your standard model parking ratio, or could it be the reduced parking ratio? So, at that time, this was the scenario that was selected. You know, kind of with that uncertainty, we picked the one that was a little bit higher so you can kind of get the higher envelope of the potential impacts for the EIR. As you kind of move over through here, this purple group is essentially varying the household, or the number of dwelling units, the type of dwelling unit, and the parking supply. You get somewhere between 500 and 3,000 dwelling units within the gateway capacity. And then, these are scenarios that would be new. These were the ones that, part of the reason why we're presenting this again is, well, what do we, if we vary the household characteristics, you know, how much do we need to verify? And it actually is pretty extreme, you know, to get still 9,850 units, you essentially need to have all studio apartments, so one person per dwelling unit, and a parking ratio down to .25 parking spaces per dwelling unit. So, with three gateways, you're looking at a pretty extreme scenario with, you know, all studio apartments. Some of these other scenarios here, they look like they are below gateway capacity, and they obviously are in the morning, but if you look at the evening peak hour trip generation, it's actually they are above the overall gateway capacity. So, really, the one scenario that does achieve, you know, within three gateways, 9,850 units, it's all studio apartments and .25 parking spaces per dwelling unit. So, the other piece of information that's on here is the live-work percentages for these kind of household characteristics scenarios. And what you see is, similar to kind of the gateway capacity, a range that's a little bit higher than, or in some cases, a lot higher than, you know, what I presented originally about the live-work percentages for, you know, communities about like Mountain View. So, you see a range here from 52 percent up to 81 percent. So, 81 percent of people living and working in North Bay Shore. So, the, obviously, you can change the different number of dwelling units, you change the residential type, you can change the parking supply, and you can see different kind of characteristics. So, two examples that kind of stood out were with three gateways, you could kind of have a neighborhood mix or a neighborhood residential. So, this is where you have the 70 percent smaller units and the 30 percent larger units with three gateways with the reduced parking ratio, so the .6 parking spaces per dwelling unit. And in that case, you know, the estimated live-work percentage is around 60 percent. Kind of on the other extreme, if the focus is on the number of dwelling units, 9,850 within three gateways, you're looking at kind of all studio apartments, .25 parking spaces per dwelling unit, and an estimated live-work percentage above 80 percent. And that's still a neighborhood, but it's kind of more like a dorm, you know, type of kind of mix. Yeah, actually, the 9,850, it's similar to the number of dorms that are on Stanford campus. They have somewhere around 12,000, so just to put it into perspective. So, you know, we could certainly talk about vehicle trips and how it relates to the gateway capacity, but another way to think about the benefit or the efficiency of putting residential next to office is by looking at vehicle miles traveled. And we do find that it's actually a very efficient, you know, idea to put the two uses together. So, what I'm showing you here is a BMT per-service population for North Bay Shore for what would be your adopted precise plan here, so 33.1. And what's meaningful is comparing between the two scenarios. So, under the project, so with the additional residential, you see a reduction in the BMT per-service population. So, you know, what you're seeing is just people are closer together, so they're traveling less on average. And that's a 7 percent reduction, which is a pretty big number, you know, just to put it into perspective. You know, the, at the citywide level, you still see a reduction, a little less than 7 percent, but certainly a very large reduction. And even at the county level, you see a slight reduction in the BMT per-service population. So, this gives you an idea of, or another way to think about, you know, the efficiency of the project, which is kind of a remarkable result to see such a change. So, the last question of the city council was, you know, what is, what does the addition of residential do to the gateway capacity? And really, why this question is being asked is, today, you see a very peak direction in the morning, inbound traffic, and you see a lot of available space in the outbound direction. So, I found it to be helpful to kind of show two simulations. One is first of, the first one will be of, you know, that condition today, you know, where you have a very peak inbound direction. And then, another one where we're going to add some traffic, so you see a little bit more of a balance in what's going in and out. You know, you may not experience traffic like this, because this is kind of a bird's-eye view, but this, these are the things that you do experience each day. So, what we'll be looking at is a local street, you know, with four legs to it. It does have pedestrian crossings here. You'll see turn lanes like this. The peak direction is going to be this direction here, and then your, you know, non-peak or outbound direction is going to be this one here. So, this is the one, you know, that if you look now, you see a lot of kind of available space. And then, what we'll do is, in the second simulation, you'll see an increase in traffic that goes kind of across here, and across here, and across this leg as well. So, if you're adding residential, it's going to be coming from kind of all, you know, each one of those legs to head out, to their destinations. So... All right. So, a couple of things to look at while you're looking at this, this is about a minute, minute and a half, is you have your peak direction here, and this traffic is stopped as cross-traffic is going. You'll see people on bikes, you'll see buses, you'll see different kind of vehicle, passenger vehicle types, all slightly different behavior. You've got cyclists that kind of like to do things in the last minute. You'll see, you know, bicyclists crossing through here, and you've got buses that are turning, and they're going to turn a little slower than a car might. You'll see pedestrians crossing as well. And what'll happen is we'll kind of pan backwards along this direction. So, you know, you see traffic here on the side streets, they're waiting, and you have traffic kind of coming through. One of the things to pay attention to kind of towards the end of this simulation is the, how traffic starts to queue back here. So, like I said, these are things that you kind of experience while you're in your car, you know, but, you know, this is what's happening when you start to think about the system itself.
This is the way it's going to be?
This is really just a representative intersection.
Okay, but it's not now, it's the way you're...
Yeah, it's basically what would be happening today, you know, where you have, you know, your peak direction, you know, it's all inbound, there's still some outbound traffic, but there's a lot of space, right? I think in this part of the simulation, it's getting close to the end here, you'll see traffic kind of backing up here, stacking up. People can still get into this left turn lane, and you'll see in the next one that that's not necessarily the case. As the stacking starts to be more extensive and stays longer, you can't get into that lane. So, that's the first simulation. And so, what I want to show is the second one. The awkward pause.
If you try to play again.
You could close all the media player windows and then just open the file again.
So, you have the screen captures though, right? Yeah. All right. I do have faith in simulations, but I also did screen captures so that we can still get the point across. So, let me just jump back into the presentation. And there's a few things here that I just kind of want to reiterate, you know, in terms of what you experience or you see that affects traffic. So, while the peak direction's moving, you have things, the types of interactions that are slowing people down are right turns that are stopping as pedestrians are crossing. You know, that's something that will slow the traffic coming in here, leads to kind of more stacking back this way. You have bicyclists on the roadway, and they actually do slow traffic or can slow traffic in their presence. And then, you have kind of cross-traffic. And this is, you know, just while this is waiting, you have traffic that's going across here. You have slower vehicles as well that are, you know, taking more time, and certainly as they're in the system as well, or in the peak direction, they're going to slow traffic as well. But I think one of the things that I really wanted to point out, and is between the two simulations, imagine you saw another minute and a half, kind of the end of that simulation, the one you saw, the peak kind of stacking was about here, and you can see how there's a lot of left turns in this, in this left turn pocket. You have, we've added traffic in the outbound direction. That basically means that this same amount of volume, the same number of vehicles are going to stop for longer, and they're going to queue back further. So, you can see that there's a more extensive kind of stacking or queue. And you also can see that what's happening is it's getting far enough back that it's affecting your ability to turn left. Basically, it's empty at this point. So, with pretty, in this case, a pretty modest change in the traffic, you know, headed in the outbound direction, you do see a pretty big change in how the intersection, or how the gateway ultimately would operate. So, that's, that's this first part of the presentation.
So, we wanted to pause at this, at this point, and just see if the commission had any general comments on the slides that you just saw in general, or if there's any members on the public who had just general questions as we presented all this kind of technical information.
Sounds good. Commissioner Swed, the questions. Commissioner Cox.
I have just a few from the House of Representatives. Okay, so on page nine, where it's talking about the EIR, so I mean, my understanding is, is this is talking about 9,850 units of smaller size with a .6 parking ratio?
1.2.
1.2 parking ratio, okay. And it talks about, you know, significant impacts, 22 intersections, mitigations can be applied for. I look back, and I looked at the EIR, and I saw six or seven of them that went to half, some from the DAP or whatever. And I'm wondering, I mean, is this a gridlock situation we're talking about, if that happens? Or, I mean, is it... Because, I mean, that's the thing people are concerned about most, that, I mean, the system is so overloaded that it can't function at all. I mean, is, would that be a fair characterization of that scenario, or is it not as bad as that?
For 9,850 units, we studied for three gateways, you would be, you know, in that more kind of, it'd be very difficult for cars to move around, so that's what people would do.
It's basically not doable at that point.
I have a follow-up.
So, without additional gateways, that's what we would have.
So, I have a clarification on that. What time period is that for? Is that for the busiest 15 minutes of the day, or hour, or what time period would that be?
Yeah, we studied for the peak hour in the morning and the peak hour in the evening.
So, the condition that you're characterizing as gridlock would be for the entire hour, or for just some part of it?
Well, the, to get very specific, it is for kind of a very, you know, one or two cycles, so a couple minutes, but because of the way that the traffic enters into North Bay Shore, that occurs for the entire hour. If you just think about what you see out there now, right? You know, if you were to stand there from 7:00 in the morning, you'd see an increase in traffic. At about 7:30, maybe 8:00, from 8:00 to 9:00, you see about the same amount of traffic. And so, really, you know, it's a condition that persists for a long period of time. So, it's more than just a couple cycles, it's for an hour, maybe even two hours.
I had a couple other questions on staff, but they had to do with, you know, the additional capacity that might be added. Do you want me to wait on those?
Please, if you wouldn't mind, yeah.
All right, and then, and also, we're just, I can wait later for this. Okay. That's it for me then.
So, in your analysis, eventually, you'll hit the trip cap well before you've built everything out, and that'll stop, you know, office entitlements. So, I'm having a hard time reconciling sort of this worst-case scenario where you have maximum build-out when we have a mechanism in place that will eventually stop office development and presumably, you know, yield a result that is probably severe, but not nearly as severe as what the EIR suggests when you have maximum build-out of everything. So, how did you, in other words, did you factor the trip cap into the traffic analysis?
Yeah, we, I think part of this will help when Martin presents a little bit more of his, his presentation, but when we're looking at those trip generation estimates, we're looking at a couple things that reflect the policies of the plan. So, it's building the additional 3.4 million square feet of office development, achieving the 45 percent SOV target. It is taking into account 9,850 units for the scenario that we studied and the parking ratio of 1.2. So, that's what we studied. In all those scenarios that we presented, it's still the 3.4 million square feet and the 45 percent SOV, and then we varied like the number of dwelling units, the type of dwelling unit, and the parking supply. So, you can see how much things vary, you know, when you start to, all right, I really do have just three gateways, what do I need to do?
That's what I'm, what I'm not certain about, though, is in, you know, as you develop at a certain point, because we know, you know, maximum build-out will, you know, you'll well exceed the trip cap, but, you know, you will hit that trip cap well before everything is built out, all of the office space, the residential, which suggests to me that there's a, you know, there's a point where you will have to stop building office, and you're not going to get the level of service impacts because, you know, once you've exceeded the trip cap, then you can't, you can't add any more office space. And I'm having, I guess I'm not, I'm not really under- And I'm, I'm having, I guess I'm not, I'm not really understanding to what extent the traffic analysis of the EIR takes that into consideration.
Yeah, I mean, the, the monitoring is something that's occurring regularly and it's going to be an opportunity to correct stepwise. You know, we're doing an analysis, kind of, it does have assumptions and, you know, certain parameters and inputs what the outcome could be, but there's many correction points along the way. You know, and I think those are, that's a very important part of the plan. So what we're studying is kind of that full condition, you know? Yeah. And I think the other part is really about, you know, the monitoring. That's an important part of the plan to make changes. And really, I think the goal ultimately still is to build 3.4 million and, you know, the 9,850 units.
Thank you. Commissioner Baird.
I, I think maybe I'm asking the same question that Commissioner Ramirez is asking. So if we're committed to building 9,850 units, so I guess the question becomes, is it more important to build the housing units than it is the 3.4 million square feet of office, given the jobs, housing imbalance that we have? So.
Yeah, I mean, well, well, just in terms of the, the amount of growth and its effect on the, the gateways, we will be talking a little bit more about that adjustment and, and we'll be asking the commission at a very high level, maybe you want to recommend a, what we're calling a policy package that would be less than 9,850 units, first of all. We studied that maximum in the EIR to get that worst case scenario, to kind of analyze the vision that we heard from EPC and council. So that, that's the first point. And then in terms of the, the office square footage, you know, that 3.4 million square feet has basically already been allocated through the bonus FER process that we went through. And we have a couple of projects be entitled, the Broad Reach Office Project and of course the Google Charleston East Project, and we have several others that will be moving forward. So that, that's kind of already in play and that's already baked into the analysis. And now we're looking at what additional residential could we add and its effect on the gateway capacity, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so here's a key point I want to make sure I understand, okay? And that's that, given that the 3.4 million of office space is already entitled, I mean, you notice that there's no way of clawing it back really. I mean, you know, the, the thing that I'm hearing out of this is that initially we talked about the idea that, well, we don't have to put any cap on residential because it's kind of like it's reverse flow and so it's not going to be a problem and everything like this. This was one of the possibilities that was, you know, talked about. And yet, when we look at the actual analysis here, what we're seeing is, is there's a big impact on, on this residential, depending on how many units, the type of units and the type of parking. And so, I mean, the idea of just saying that everything could automatically be entitled is a question. Is that fair to say?
When you say everything, you mean?
Every, all the residential, I mean, you know, being able to build the 9850 residential units with a 1.2 parking ratio and a 40, 30, 20, 10 mix, it's, it's not clear that that can be done, you know, without serious consequences. And so we need to think about whether that particular proposal is, you know, the one that we want to have.
That's correct. And I'll, I'll be talking more, more about that and asking the same questions.
Thanks. Are there any other questions on this?
Just one, conceptually, and it's a little, just go with me for one second. So when I lived in DC, I was struck by certain roads and figures on the bridge and where it becomes one way during peak hours. Is there the potential to use our gateways in a different, so that there's, we're funneling traffic in on one road and then out on another? Is that conceivable if we were to build out all of the residential? And like, I mean, I just don't even know if that's, if that's an option. Maybe?
It, it could be an option. You know, usually those are kind of done as a pair.
Right.
They're usually referred to as a couplet. You know, I think there's potentially some challenges with that in terms of.
Just where the buildings are currently laid out.
Yeah, exactly.
It doesn't seem like the internal circulation would allow that. So we're working with the existing constraints of the gateways as those.
Yeah, yeah. I think one of the, the challenges with the gateways is that it's very much a transition point, you know, where the, the vehicles are all kind of their last couple thousand feet, you know, so they're trying to circulate to their destination. So, you know, usually a couplet, kind of that one way. They're parallel and they're really for throughput. So they're kind of trying to just get as much traffic through and you're, you're very much at that transition at the gateway. Makes it challenging.
Any more commissioner questions? Okay, so you would recommend having question, questions or comments from the staff at this, the public at this point?
Yeah, certainly, I mean, it. This is a little challenging in that we're presenting kind of three distinct sets of information, but we wanted to pause a little and give folks an opportunity to ask some questions. So the, the presentation will, you know, continue with the TIA analysis showing the impacts as well as the policy considerations. But yes, if you wanted to open it up just for a second.
So do we have any kind of public who would have questions or comments on the stuff that we've seen to this point?
I have a question, just a process question. So if, if, if a member of the public addresses us now and then wants to address us on a late, something that comes up later, will they have the opportunity to speak again?
Well, I would like that to be the case. Is that allowable?
Yes, that, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, well, thanks for the opportunity for providing the, the input. I'll just focus on my comments first. Overall, going back to kind of the vision that we've had for North Bay Shore and really having a, a walkable, bikeable, complete neighborhoods, I think it's really important to kind of keep that in mind as you're looking at all these numbers and diagrams and so forth and so on. And I think I'm, I'm, we're going to talk about the transportation impact analysis, you know, a little later, but a lot of these things, and I think I really compliment Dan and Ferrin Pierce for doing an excellent job on the scenarios and particularly trip generation. I, I really haven't seen as much detail and good stuff that's in here that really provide informed decision making. So very good job overall on that. And I, I, I do think that it's kind of this four dimensional chess that you really need to be looking at. There's key assumptions in here and the analysis really shows this. And the parking ratios, it really has to do, what we haven't talked about is the percentage of people that are leaving North Bay Shore with those simulation in terms of what percentage. Right now, the assumption is 77%, which is the average for all of Mountain View. And later on, we're going to be talking about a goal. That's a really important assumption in terms of what you're looking at. The internalization rate, which those things we're talking about, really good work there too. Think if we can't be what at least Palo Alto is right now, somewhere around 35%, given the landowner that we have is a dominant player here, we really haven't done justice to that. So that's a really important, these adjustments to the assumptions, he's kind of done this in a couple of dimensions, but there's really four or five dimensions, a chess that you really need to play with in this. And they are just assumptions. I mean, later on, you're going to be talking about monitoring, which is absolutely critical for a feedback loop of what you can do and what you don't, right? So I really think that you, two important points at this point. Keep the vision in mind in terms of what ultimately the outcome that you want is. And then I don't expect you to fully understand all the dynamics of the interchange of all these, these numbers, but they are key assumptions. If we're really going to have a new mobility paradigm, paradigm, we really need to be thinking about those. I'll have more comments later.
You know, like, because of that, I just want to very quickly support the previous speaker in that I think one way to look at this is, hey, you have an option all the way over here and an option all the way over here. And another way to look at it is that there are a number of different policy levers and policy choices and a number of different assumptions that can allow for, you know, different choices in the middle and would urge you as you look at the rest of the presentations to be looking at assumptions of, you know, how much the people who live there will actually be driving out based on the transportation infrastructure that's being provided and the parking and other policies, how many people we're assuming live and work nearby, how much gateway capacity might be added with active transportation and high occupancy vehicles that could alleviate that constraint. So would urge you to listen for these different policy choices and assumptions that would help come up with scenarios that help address as many of the goals as possible. I'll make more comments later.
Thank you. So no other comments, we'll continue to, against Martin's, Martin's presentation.
Okay, so Dan will continue with the TIA summary.
So over the past year, we've done the, the transportation analysis for the EIR and recently saw that the, the gap to EIR was publicly circulated. So I just wanted just to touch on really two kind of areas, just to give you a sense of the study area and then just a very basic kind of impact summary. The, the transportation study, you know, it has a description about existing conditions. We do talk a lot about the gateway capacity and the estimates. You know, then we do very specific scenarios under project conditions, which is just existing plus the project, just the project magically shows up. And then under existing, and then a cumulative condition. And then a big part of what we do is the impact analysis of as you add the project traffic, what are the effects on the transportation system? So our study area, that was pretty extensive. So, and that's because of the, the size of the project, 3.4 million square feet and 9,850 units. So North Bay Shore is right here and then you've got the city of Mountain View kind of right here. And then these highlighted areas are the different freeways that were, were studied. And these freeways were studied because they had, you know, enough traffic on them that they could potentially have an impact. So you're seeing roughly studying up here to Millbrae, you know, over here to almost 680 or 80 in 92, down to kind of south San Jose, Coll Road, section of 280 as well, all of 237, parts of 87 and 101 kind of to east San Jose. So that's kind of ultimately the, the kind of area of influence on the freeway system with the office development and with the, the additional residential. The intersection study area, each one of these dots represents a study location. A lot of the intersections that we studied were, were in North Bay Shore, certainly at the gateways, but also within kind of the local circulation and then along each of the major corridors of Shoreline, Ring Store, at San Antonio. And we also did additional study intersections that were essentially the paths from North Bay Shore to regional facilities. So one example here is kind of going through Palo Alto all the way over to 280. Then you have a couple others here where you're coming up, well, along the Frontage Road onto Embarcadero to 101 and then, you know, from 101 through east Palo Alto and Minlo Park to Highway 84. So the kind of study area was largely within the city of Mountain View, but also to, from the two regional freeways as well. So the impact analysis, we looked at intersections, we looked at freeways, we looked at bike and transit as well. And so in terms of the intersection impacts, this is a summary of comparison, two years ago, that we did the adopted precise plan. So here's the summary. We studied 56 intersections in that analysis and under the project condition, just existing, adding just the project. In the, in the morning, there was seven impacted locations and in the evening, there's six. So you can see the direct comparison here that, one, we studied a larger area, larger project, more study intersections, and we had more impacts as well. So you can kind of see the, the, the number of impacts. And then here in 2030, probably more of a scenario where you could see the actual kind of complete build out of, of North Bay Shore potentially. Under the adopted precise plan, we had nine in the morning and 10 in the evening. You can see how that changes in the, with the, the additional residential. So the mitigation, we did look at each individual intersection to see if there's physical changes that can be made, adding a turn lane or a through lane or something like that to really help with overall intersection flow. You know, other kind of broad improvements we thought about, really a lot like what you see in your priority transportation list around transit improvements or local street circulation improvements and then, you know, gateway management as well. So a lot of those, kind of those last three bullets are really kind of mostly looking at improvements along your gateway, really to support that shift in mode, putting more people in the cars crossing the gateways. So the other impacts were the freeways as well. And we look at, at the mixed flow lanes. So these are the ones that any car can be in and then the carpool lanes or the HOV freeway lanes. And again, we have the comparison between the adopted precise plan, the 3.4 million and then the, the full project. See, we studied more segments, it's further, goes further out and you can see the overall change in the order of magnitude of study segments between the two. So you can see how the changes occur also in that cumulative scenario in the 2030 as I'll just mention briefly, we did, we did look at transit impacts. A lot of the transit is, you know, part of the, the mixed flow, you know, it shares with the passenger vehicles on the street system. So we did identify that there will be additional transit delay because of the congestion. Seems kind of obvious, right? The, the other is that, you know, a, a big part of this plan is to shift people into buses, into transit vehicles. So there is ultimately an impact to the, the transit system from a capacity standpoint. We'd need additional buses to serve the, the additional demand. Then finally, you know, this ultimately is a disclosure document, you know, and we often focus on kind of the impacts or kind of the negative side of things. But part of the benefit is that we would have more people walking and biking, you know, in the North Bay Shore area in particular, but certainly to and from as well. So there is a beneficial impact to having, you know, more people walking and bike, biking in the North Bay Shore area. You see that as, you know, some might label that as kind of internalization, but, you know, that's one of the kind of the benefits to, to the project or of the project.
So yeah, so now this is the, the second pause, if there's any questions on the specific kind of TIA impacts before we go into the last piece of the, the policy discussion.
Any commissioner questions? Questions from commissioners? Okay, I have a, okay, so no questions? I have one. So it's somewhat of a hypothetical question and just based on what I've seen since I've been on the commission, it seems like every time, well, it seems like the more people you have, the more traffic you have. And with induced demand and all that, it seems like the more crap, the more lanes for cars you have, the more traffic you have. And so if they're, and I know we do have some alternatives for making this, making the flow through North Bay Shore better, but, you know, let's say we added more lanes, 237, 101, 280, 85 and all that, would that really make much of a difference? Or are we just at a point where there is so much demand for being in this area that we are going to have traffic until we have some kind of big crash?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, and the way I think of traffic is that it's kind of an economic indicator, right? You know, when the businesses around here are doing well, you see a lot of people being employed and, you know, so a lot of people living here as well. So you're going to have traffic, right? You can certainly do, you know, improvements like widening of 237 and 101. Those can be challenging, just honestly adjusting by from a kind of an environmental standpoint, you know, the amount of emissions that might come from them. So you can certainly do that, but, you know, with this kind of demand or success that this region has, it does get filled up and you do see that, you know, that real, you know, high level of congestion. The trick really is, is just kind of finding that balance where you're, you're using all the available space, you know, of the, the street system, the freeway system, and it still flows. It's not going to flow at 65 miles an hour, it might flow at 35 miles an hour. That's still getting people to and from, you know, and to, you know, that's success, but also what success is, you know, having more people in the cars that are traveling.
And if I could just add, I mean, I, I think, obviously, we all realize the, the traffic conditions out there and all the growth that's happening, and I, I think our regional transit agency, BTA, is aware of this, and they're embarking on a study, it's called the Next Network, and trying to think of what are some additional transit or networks that they could consider for this Silicon Valley or San Diego County area to try to address exactly what you're saying, you know? Can they, can they make some new, new connections, new improvements, new technologies, new ride-of-way uses, whatever it is, to try to address that head-on? But we'll see what comes out of that, and staff is happy to report on that as we get more information.
Great. So seeing no more questions from the commission, do we have any questions or comments from the public on this segment that we just saw?
I'm representing Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, I didn't really mention that last time.
Could you mention your name as well?
Cliff Chambers, sorry. We had an opportunity to, in reviewing the EIR and the traffic impact, transportation impact analysis was a big part of that, to meet with Martin and the consultants and ask a lot of questions, which was, we really appreciate and was, was quite productive. And one of the big discussions that we haven't really talked about now is, this is probably the last time in a major EIR that you're going to see these intersection level of significance of impacts, because we're going to be transitioning with SP 734 to VMT being the level of significant impact. And this is kind of a perfect project to kind of show the difference between a level of service analysis and a VMT analysis. And I think, you know, those are really important considerations, I think, for you to, to, to really consider. Second point on this subject that I really like to make is that I found that there's a lot of rich information in the 2,000 pages of the transportation impact analysis, but a lot of it was really buried and wasn't really summarized. So one of the comments that we made on the EIR is that we would hope that there'd be a much better general public summary of the key findings, the key assumptions, it could be more widely, because people are not going to read 2,000 pages, and we really need to have something like that. And I really feel that this staff report, the narrative, the tone, was far superior to what was in the EIR and really had a lot of really good summary information. And so I, and it really helps, I think, with public debate about some of these key issues. So I hope that some of this stuff is really carried forward as, as part of the overall discussion. Thank you.
There's one thing I do want to announce, that due to childcare constraints, I will be leaving at 10:15 and turning the meeting over to Vice Chair Heimeyer. So, wish I could say, but I cannot.
So.
So, commissioners?
Oh, okay, okay, sure.
One thing I finally discovered at about page 1,420 of 1,962 pages, there was a very nice, and it was too bad it wasn't at the beginning, or too bad it wasn't flagged, but there was a nice report, it was dated February 17th from your organization, and it was multi-page, it was 50, 60 pages, but that was really much more concise, because I got really discouraged after about page 400, and I thought, my gosh, there's got to be something, and I finally discovered it. So that might be a better thing to give to the public would be your report, because you do condense a lot of things and make some analysis. So I would recommend, and I don't know what page it starts on, 1,962 pages, but it's somewhere around 1,420 pages or somewhere near there. That was, that I found very helpful. And I tried to print some pages out, but then every time you try to, you find a page that you like, then it takes five minutes, three minutes to load again for the print function. So that was very, very cumbersome. I had some notes I wanted to make, and then I finally just gave up and said, okay, I'll just listen to your report. But it isn't that portion.
Okay, so if that's the extent of the questions on the TIA, then I'll just roll into the last section, the real, the kind of policy considerations. And this slide right here is trying to kind of really summarize and be a focus point for this whole discussion on the policy options before the EPC tonight. This wasn't in the staff report, but as we thought about it some more, we, we thought there would be a good way to summarize some, a couple of basic options for the EPC to consider. And again, to get some initial feedback from the EPC on which option they would prefer, given the vision for the plan and the kind of opportunities and constraints that you've heard about this evening. So these two comparisons to what we call policy package options are listed here. One is approximately 2,500 to 3,000 units in North Bay Shore with limited gateway improvements, or a higher number, 7,000 to 9,850 units with more gateway improvements. And I'll have a further slide that gives more detail, but that's kind of just an initial two policy package options for the EPC to consider, and I'll have a question on that. And then, based on the EPC discussion or consideration of those two basic options, the EPC can decide if they want to continue tonight and get into really a lot of the detailed policy questions that were in the staff report and that I'll have on the screen this evening. So these two policy packages, again, I'll just, there's so much information in the report, in the EIR, all this stuff, so we're, we're trying to really get to a point where we can summarize this clearly and, and again, focus the EPC's discussion on this. So again, here at what we're, again, calling policy package option number one and number two, again, these are the approximate, approximate number of dwelling units that I showed on the previous slide. Again, the mix of the units are what we're calling the neighborhood residential, which is that mix of 70% smaller units, 30% larger units. That is a draft, in the draft precise plan. Again, the parking ratio is that ambitious 0.6 spaces per unit ratio, which is also in the precise plan as a draft. And then here we have this column here, the, the gateways, and I should just mention, these are the, the policy elements right here that, that make up the policy package. This first box right here is, is the existing three gateways plus an optional Stevens Creek Bridge, that would be transit only, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And then down here would be all of the above plus Stevens Creek being both transit and carpool, so to allow even more vehicles across that potential bridge, plus to consider a new Charleston Road underpass of US 101. And then these other kind of policy elements, residential vehicle performance standard, decreasing the office SOV rate, congestion pricing and district performance monitoring. This is just trying to summarize what are kind of included in the assumptions or not included in the assumptions, and I can discuss those more as well. So again, the, the kind of the, the first question that we have for EPC is if, if they wanted to, you know, discuss or give an opinion on which policy option in general they support. The option one, which would be, again, a smaller number of residential units and just utilizing kind of the existing gateway configuration more or less, along with these other kind of elements such as a reduced parking rate. Or if they wanted to consider the more ambitious option two, which again, points to a higher number of residential units, but also calls for some substantial gateway improvements. So I don't know if the EPC would like to have a, just take a general pulse of kind of where you're, where you're on this and if you wanted to give us some feedback on that. And then again, we can roll through all the other policy elements if you wanted to, to discuss those in further detail.
Yes, I would like to do that, so. Well, what I'd like to do is just get a quick show of hands if we.
I don't want to do a show of hands until I can ask some questions.
Okay. So, that sounds good.
I'll go quickly then, okay. So here's, here's my dilemma of this option one versus option two thing. I mean, can you put them back up there so we can see them again? So, like, okay, that implies that there's, you're going to be able to get, you know, the easement that you need on the federal land in order to be able to, you know, get this bridge and get, you know, get the right-of-way and all that kind of thing. I mean, has there been any discussion about, you know, being able to do this and an assessment of the probability of them making that happen?
Yes, there have, there have been, for a number of years now, there has been a lot of discussions about that, and we've been reaching out to a number of agencies over the last number of months about that. Again, at a very high-level policy level. And so the whole issue of the bridge, the question for the EPC and council is, is if you would like the precise plan as a policy to say, we support a bridge over Stevens Creek for, for these reasons. At that point, that would go into the plan, and then there would be further feasibility studies, and we would, we would engage in a whole series of discussions with these other agencies to try to make that happen. But the first step would be to confirm a policy direction.
I see. Okay, and with respect to the Charleston Road underpass, I mean, is there a concept on who's paying for that? And, or just generally, I mean, has it come from federal funds? Does it, I mean, what, where?
It could, it could be a whole slew. It could be contributions from the bonus FAR projects, it could be the city from the Shoreline Fund, it could be, you know, agencies and grants and things like that. But we haven't gotten there. And again, like the bridge, it would be a policy decision. If you, if you value the need to have, to increase capacity, to get more residential units, and you want to have a new gateway connection, then the policy decision would be, yes, we want to go forward with that. Staff figure out a way to make that happen in terms of feasibility studies and other things.
Yeah, so I guess, just, just to clarify, I mean, where I'm coming from, from this is, I think it's great to have that as part of the policy and discussing it, but, you know, I, I hear also what Google said in their letter, that, you know, that, that until you can guarantee you're going to get that, I don't think it's feasible to go over what's in, in number one. Okay, so, I mean, I don't know how to say that, I mean, you know, it sounds like one or two. I think you start with one, you see if you can get the other things, and then you get two. Okay, so that's, anyway.
At this time, so Chair Scarborough, given the hour, I just want to make sure at this point, we're asking questions related to section number three, and then I want to go to public comment.
Can I just interject one thing? Because I have real trouble with this. I, I don't know where the.
I'm sorry. I do, I want, I want to get to public comment, I just, if there are any clarifying questions for staff about the last third part of the presentation? Seeing none.
I just have a, have a quick question, because I think the two, it's one thing to have a policy, but to differentiate, you know, we're trying to solve an issue of jobs residence imbalance overall in the city, and I think the main concern here is which option is going to get us there faster. And, you know, so there's no timing in there, and so I'm wondering how, how do we incorporate that as well? So that's just my only question.
How do you incorporate timing of making these different things happen? I mean, some of the things like feasibility studies, those would be action items and priorities that the council would, would set, that if, if the EPC council wanted to move forward with these studies for additional gateways, those could be priorities, and those are things that, again, these are multi-year improvements and studies that would be needed, but if they wanted signals, then that would be a priority. In terms of building the, the units, I mean, certainly we've seen right now, there's a, there's a pretty strong market, and we've heard that there's more interest in building residential in North Bay Shore from the Sobrato development as well as at least a couple of other developers. So we know that those are happening. So yeah, there's a number of things that would, on different timelines, yeah.
Any other clarifying questions from the commission? And then we, I want to get to public comment before we jump into discussion, please.
Well, I have a real objection to you considering these binary choices. I, I really question, under the Brown Act, since this wasn't presented in the staff report, and we didn't really have an adequate opportunity to even consider or do this, is this really allowable, this kind of report to the council? Because this was not reported in the staff report, and we really didn't have a chance to discuss or anything else. So I object, because I don't really believe we have a binary choice that you report to council. This is a wrong approach. That's my comment.
Thank you. Is there a range?
Well, I just would refer to your agenda, and it's a broad, broadly-written agenda I notice the EPC shall provide input on the notification of precise plan transportation analysis. That's a very broad description of the item. I think staff has presented broad topics to elicit broad feedback, so I don't think there's any violation of the.
And if I could just add that all these elements that you see on the screen, they're all disclosed and discussed in detail in the staff report. This is just putting that information together in a way that we hope would be more digestible, pardon me, and comprehensible to the public and the EPC to help make a more informed decision. And certainly, we can roll through each of these in detail, which would mirror what's in the staff report, if folks wanted to do that.
And also, study sessions are designed to elicit general comments, there's no formal action being taken. It's just input to staff, and I think Martin covered it in detail, that this is a proper way to elicit that feedback.
And is it at the commission's discretion how we choose to provide that feedback, if we were to take the framework of option one versus option two, or if we were to take a different tack? Is that within the commission's discretion? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, let's return to public comment.
And similarly, I would really urge you not to look at this as a binary choice, and particularly for a few different reasons. One is that in the initial material that the experts provided to Mountain View when, you know, looking at whether to add housing in North Bay Shore and how much, one of the questions and concerns is, how many people do you need to have in order to have a complete neighborhood with services so that people can stay near their neighborhood and do lots of their day-to-day activities without having to get into a car multiple times a day just to do the basics of life? And this is also something that came up when Menlo Park did a similar, you know, adding housing to the area near Facebook and decided to have about 5,500 units of housing near Facebook, and there was a minimum that you needed in order to have that complete neighborhood. So by having the, the choices be all the way on the one and all the way on the other, where the one on the low end seems like it might be too low to support the service the one on the low end seems like it might be too low to support the services, and you might even have a paradoxical effect of getting more driving because people don't have that complete neighborhood. The other thing I would encourage you to look at would be more at those policy levers to see whether there's recommendations that you can make. If you want to see more of the complete neighborhood, what other, like, which of the policies, directions would you like to go and to recommend to see if there can be a level of residences that can help address the jobs-housing balance, address the housing crisis, and, you know, stay within the limits of a functional transportation system? The other thing that I believe that Commissioner Kapilis mentioned in terms of time was phasing, because it doesn't all happen at once, and so are there also dimensions relating to, you know, different phases of the plan where you can implement something, check and see whether it's working, and then take another step further? So, I would really urge you with all that input to not look at this as a binary choice. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this third part of the presentation? Seeing none, I'd like to bring it back to the commission. And maybe the first place to start is a conversation about whether or not the option one, option two conversation is how we want to proceed, or if we want to take it element by element. I'd love feedback before we proceed. Commissioner Cox. Oh, is that a question? Commissioner Barr?
I would just try to clarify. So, you're suggesting that we only vote on this and we not go to the other seven or eight questions?
No, I'm, right now, I'm soliciting feedback from the commission about how you would like to proceed, and if we, as staff recommended or suggested, presented, there, one way of thinking about this is looking at these two options, one and two, and staging our approach. So, we would take option number one, and then see how the commission votes, and then take a series of related questions. Or we could adopt a different policy. It just, it seems like there's, there are options, and I want to make sure we identify which one works for us. Commissioner Cox.
Okay, so I sure don't want to just vote, "Do you like one or two?" Okay? Because I think there's important questions we need to answer tonight. One of them is, you know, are, we started with the idea of, you know, the neighborhood residential mix, and one of the questions raised in the staff report is, do we want to stick with that, or do we want to go with like more, a mix of more all studios? And I think that's an important question for the commission to address tonight. I think the second question is, where's the commission's comfortability, comfort level on the parking, you know, between the 1.2 and the 0.6? And in terms of over time, and what do you need to get to the 0.6? I think giving commission feedback on that is essential as well. And I think the third thing is just, I mean, you know, what do you need to make happen with transportation in order to, you know, allow for, you know, opening up the gate more on how many residential units? My biggest concern is, is that when we first started talking about this, we came at it with an idea that many people helped, that you could just, you know, you could just hit the accelerator on the residential, and it would have only a beneficial effect on the traffic. And I just don't believe that's true. And because it's not, then, I mean, we need to talk about, you know, the implications of that and the policy implications of that. That's my feedback. So, I like the idea of going, we can, we can talk about this, but I'd like to hear all the commissioners say, but I'd like to go through the original questions we had.
Commissioner, can I?
So, I actually have a question. So, and I, I'm trying to go back into my mind, because I know we've seen, we've seen you guys a couple of times on this. And I recall a staff report that we received that had a lot more variety in terms of the unit mix, and talking about percentages of units. I remember us giving feedback on that, and I remember there being traffic implications, and that we weren't even talking about this many units because the traffic implications that we saw affected the three gateways. And I can't recall if it's that we won't be able to do, look at any new projects in North Bay Shore because we're already at capacity almost at every gateway? Or, I don't know if you guys recall what my, what I'm having, but my memory, but it's, you know, over four, four and a half years, it kind of gets fuzzy. But I just recall that there was more of a variety, and I do kind of agree with hearing my colleagues that option one and option two sound, you know, a bit constraining in terms of what constitutes a real, quote-unquote, community. You guys can...
So, yeah, I mean, just in general, we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of study sessions on the policy topics that have formed kind of the basis of the precise plan and what was analyzed in the EIR. We did kind of a first-run analysis late last year, which kind of showed us that at about the 3,000-unit level. And, you know, that was brought forward, and council had those additional questions. They said, "Well, what can we tweak? What, how can we tweak the assumptions? How can we tweak the model? How can we tweak the live-work percentage to see what we would need to do to get more housing units?" And so, that's the work that we were directed to do, and that was all the information that you heard tonight.
Right.
And, and so, that's kind of the progression.
Okay. I just, I remember different charts and different mixes, and so I just was trying to pair those two together. Okay. Thank you for clarification. Commissioner Ramirez?
I largely agree with Commissioner Cox. I'm not sure how helpful it would be to start at this level. I, you know, I disagree on some of the other points you made. The way I look at, you know, providing input on the, the original policy items that, you know, that we're reporting, is, you know, we're looking at ways to make the original vision achievable. And so, I mean, it may be that we can't get to, you know, what, the maximum envelope, but, you know, we have, we have mechanisms in place to sort of address, you know, the concerns along the way. But the policies that we're considering, I think, are intended to try and help us achieve the, the original vision that we've studied. And this, I'm not sure that sort of binary option really helps us do that. It's more like, do we want to, you know, dramatically limit the vision, you know, reduce the scope of the project? Or, you know, try, try something more expansive? And I don't think that's the right question to ask. It's more, if we have this vision in place, how can we get there as best as we can? And these policy proposals, that, sort of like what we did with, like, then just go through and see if there's, you know, general consensus, consensus around them. You know, these are certain things that we should explore in greater detail to see if they do help us get to where we'd like to be.
Okay, so, Commissioner Ramirez?
I think that we're in appreciation to what staff was trying to do. I think we're trying to take a very complex issue and put it into a very, very simple form, and I think that we can't do that to really do it justice. I think the whole idea of phasing in to get to a point makes more sense to me. It's more realistic to me, because I think when you're thinking about overall policy, you've got to really take into consideration, you know, what, that's why I brought up timing, because I think we would like to see things move forward if there is interest in doing that. So, maybe it's better to look at each one of these pieces to start that phase in, to reach that, in that, to me, makes a lot more sense.
Commissioner Ramirez?
So, I recommend that we go through the questions, the six questions or whatever, and maybe that will kind of guide us to working a little bit more with the one or two. But I don't feel comfortable in saying yes or no to one of those. I think there's things that we need to discuss.
Looking at my colleagues, is there general consensus to take these one at a time?
Yep.
Okay. So, let's begin with item number one, adjusting the plan household characteristics.
Right, so just, just to be clear, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm confused, because we have this staff report, and we have questions, EPC question number one, should the precise plan include policies supporting the new Stevens Creek bridge crossing, et cetera?
Yeah. These are, they were slightly amended, I'm sorry, but we will cover all of them in the presentation.
And if I'm correct, this matches the chart that you showed us just two slides ago.
Correct.
So, we're taking them at the commission's suggestion, element by element, looking at which one of the levers.
So, given that, make sure that you ask the questions in full sentences, because it may be obvious to you what full words means, but if it wasn't given to us ahead of time...
Right. These, the questions will be, yeah.
So, but the key is that these are the six elements that we're looking at, drawn from, and Martin, if you go back, they're the two from this table, and we will take them, full questions, one at a time.
So, the first topic is the household characteristics. Again, the draft plan has that housing unit mix that you see on the screen, again, with the parking ratio. Again, the parking ratio, the city council signaled in November that if the plan were to adopt that this ambitious 0.6 average parking spaces per unit, that maybe some of the first residential developments could, could be approved, perhaps with a higher parking ratio, because we don't have all the multimodal improvements in place in the area. That's just kind of a note. And, again, there could be some implementation challenges with trying to approve all these projects at 0.6 parking spaces at this time, until we can get more multimodal improvements in the area. So, again, the draft plan has these two characteristics, the housing unit mix and the parking ratio. So, really, the question, which should mirror the staff report, is, does the EPC recommend adjusting those household characteristics for unit size and/or parking ratios in order to fulfill an objective, perhaps? If you want to try to get more units out in North Bay Shore, as was shown in Dan's analysis, you know, that really small unit of studios, if you worked to tilt towards that size of units, you could get more units. So, that's really the question, the first question before.
Commissioner Ramirez?
When I, when I look at this, I try to go back to the vision of the, the updated precise plan, and it says they want to create a neighborhood. So, what does that mean? Does that mean it's a neighborhood similar to what we have in Stanford? It's a dormitory neighborhood, or it is a family neighborhood? So, I think that that, to me, needs, you know, we need to consider that. And when I thought about this, I thought, well, what I heard from the feedback and the visioning from the community was we wanted to have a family neighborhood. They were saying, "Well, you know, we'd like to see an extension of downtown. We'd like to have, you know, maybe what it's like for old Mountain View," you know, something like that, and with the walkability. And so, when I look at the characteristics, my inclination would be that residential, you know, picture, you know, of the variety of dwelling units, and what is, what is that? And then the parking ratios, we also went through the whole plan of smaller walking blocks and everything, so you could walk, and you could ride your bike, and you could have public transportation. Okay, public transportation is limited out there, but guess what? If you give the parking places, they're going to use them. And so, I'm, I'm all over the 0.6 parking ratios, and I didn't quite understand why there was an objection from the developers, saying that they didn't think that was something that they could accomplish. And I don't know what I'm missing there, but, you know, I feel like you've got to start at that high level of what the community is looking to do, and you need to proceed from that. And so, I really think that the variety of offerings out there, as well as the parking ratio, should stay just like it is.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I basically agree with everything that Commissioner Kapilis said. I think the, the vision we've, that that was articulated, you know, by the community, by council, is for a neighborhood, and that means a mix of units. I, I don't know how rigidly we intend to adhere to the, you know, 40% micro, 30% one-bedroom bedroom, you know, if there's, you know, but, but that, that kind of proportion makes sense, right? Some number of units available for families, I think is, that, I don't think we should change that. But, you know, I'm, I think we should be much more flexible with the parking ratios. And, you know, I agree, you know, I don't see why we should, we can't start more restrictive with, you know, 0.6 ratio early on, because there's no, I mean, it's not like people are going to be able to park, you know, in neighborhoods, right? There's no on-street parking to, you know, to use to cheat out of that. You know, I, I think that's where, that's where we can be much more innovative and flexible by looking at reduced parking ratios, especially for micro units, where I think a lot of people who live in micro units may not need a car at all. And so, providing them, you know, that option, you know, and maybe even going below 0.6 for micro units, and then, you know, a little bit higher for two- and three-bedrooms, something along those lines. But that's where I think we should be flexible.
Well, maybe, maybe we should also put in unbundled parking into that consideration, because if somebody doesn't want to use parking at all...
Yeah, and just a point of clarification, unbundled parking is a policy in the draft plan, and we have previous direction in that today. There is...
I thought so.
Because we've, we've seen unbundled parking defined a couple of ways, and I think in most of the developments, if not all, that have gone before planning, commission, and council, it's meant everybody gets one unit, and then they can choose to rent additional spaces that they need. But, you know, sort of, I guess, the, the other definition of unbundled parking, I've heard is, nobody gets any parking space. You have to rent one from the get-go if you want one. So, what's the understanding of unbundled parking in North Bay Shore?
The way the discussion has been taking place in the draft that we presented, it's the latter.
The latter, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cox?
Is that traditional, is it?
Commissioner Cox?
Okay, so, I'll go halfway, okay? I'm very much supportive of the neighborhood residential ratio, because, I mean, my thinking on it was, is that, you know, it's, it's as aggressive as we can go in terms of smaller units, and still even have the inkling of, you know, some kind of neighborhood residential feel to it. I mean, you know, this is, this is far more aggressive on smaller units than any other place within Mountain View. And, I mean, you know, for, I mean, for, a typical mix is 60/40, you know, one-bedroom and two-bedrooms, right? So, I mean, I think we've already made enough concession to that, and I don't want to push that further. My concern on the parking is this, that right now, so, I mean, a number that keeps coming up in my mind is a number that Richard Wilson quotes, you know, who, he's a parking expert in Southern California. And he said that, you know, if you go below 0.9, I mean, you know, even in an area like downtown Portland, you know, I mean, you know, you're going, you're pushing against the limits of what people are willing to accept. Now, okay, so, let's compare that against some other numbers, like, okay, so, given the neighborhood residential mix, what's the model parking standard for that? It's 1.3. So, 1.2 is already below the model parking standard? We do want to be below the model parking standard for this, because we have the idea there, but, you know, this place isn't where it needs to be, you know, right now to get the 0.6. So, if I were a developer, you know, I mean, I'd be thinking about, you know, whether I can do it, do the initial developments at that. So, I would start at 1.2 and grade myself down, ask transportation and other improvements, and like a school, a grocery store, or some other kinds of things, come in there to help support that, because I want there to be those things to come in. I mean, my, my big concern is, if we just say, "Well, we just dropped the standards initially," you know, everything floods in, and then nobody has any incentive to bring in, you know, the kinds of things that we need to make it a complete neighborhood, or to build the, the very expensive transportation things that need to happen in order to be able to make this viable. So, I mean, you know, that's why I like this idea of phasing, it's because, you know, you know how far you can go up to a certain point, and then, then, okay, you know, start doing the hard stuff to make the rest of it happen, if you want them to see it go forward. I think there is public will here to make it go forward, but, but you need to get past that hard stuff. So, anyway, that's my answer to this one. I'm, I'm with him on the household characteristic, and I think we can get to 0.6, but not initially.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I agree with Commissioner Cox. I think initially, because we don't have the public infrastructure out there, I don't see how we can... see how we can blend in .6. I'd say maybe, what, the first 3,000 units that we go with the higher standard, and then after that, we ratchet down to the .6, and then with the idea that we would have better infrastructure out there. I know it is somewhat self-selecting that if you don't have a car, you're going to live out there, but I'm concerned that initially, we just don't have a way to get people around.
Commissioner May.
Sure. I missed, I think, the beginning of Commissioner Caprilla's, since I ran to the restroom. But I think that I'm leaning more towards where Commissioner Ramirez and Caprilla's are, and that's just experiential, which is, we, I was not initially supportive of housing in North Bay Shore, but everything we've heard is that people want these units, they want the aggressive parking, you know, low parking ratio, that this is the community that they want, and I think that if that's what the community's asking for, then we need to be responsive to that. And this is the perfect place to have that, since there's so many, you know, there's jobs out there. So, that's where I am.
Any other comment?
I join Commissioners Ramirez, Caprilla, and May, and I think, Steph, you have, it sounds like there are really two proposals. One, where the housing mix remains the same, and the second part of that is the really aggressive .6 parking standard. The second is the housing mix remains the same, but you begin with a 1.2 model parking standard and phase development as time moves on. Is that...
It sounds like for two.
Right, but I think for the purposes of providing it to council, those are the two general camps.
Okay, so the next topic, gateways, again, not to throw another table at you tonight, but this is kind of a useful way to maybe understand the issue of gateways. Again, I believe this table was in the report, staff report. But really, this just shows the number of units that you could get out of North Bay Shore based on these different household characteristics in terms of the number of folks per unit, the parking ratio, and the number of gateways. And the number of gateways here, you see in this first tranche right here, again, that is showing the existing gateway, Shoreline, Rangstorf, and San Antonio, with a transit-only bridge. This second tranche is showing, again, those same gateways plus a bridge that includes transit and carpooling, again, with these different factors. And then the last tranche here, you can't maybe see it all here, got cut off, but basically showing the full gateways, which includes the Charleston Road underpass, and that get, that last...
You hit escape, it might come on slow.
Yeah, let's see here.
Can minimize the view. There it goes.
That's basically going 7,002 up to 9,850. So... So that provides kind of a context for the gateways and what you could potentially get in terms of number of units based on these other factors. And with that, I can present some additional information. We heard questions about the bridge, and I noted that I could discuss a little further about that. And if you'd like, I can just kind of roll through this, just so you have this policy background. So again, the topic is increasing the gateways as another lever, so to speak. Again, the question is at a very high policy level. Does the EPC support the precise plan, having a policy that addresses this issue of a Stevens Creek Bridge? The general plan has a goal, really, to improve connections between North Bay Shore and Nassau Ames, and which is why this whole topic has come up over the past several years. And if the commission and council supports a policy for a new Stevens Creek Bridge, then we would have an action item in the precise plan, which again, would address feasibility analysis, further EIR studies about impacts to biology or ecological resources, further discussions with the federal agencies about routing, further discussions with VTA and other folks about the type of technology that a bridge could be designed for. All these things would happen, again, at a further stage in the process. Again, the benefits of a Stevens Creek Bridge, it definitely would improve the travel time for transit that is trying to get into North Bay Shore, in and out, as well as the connections between Nassau Ames and the activity going out there within North Bay Shore as well. It would improve the transit routing, buses would be able to get into North Bay Shore without having to go through the congestion at Shoreline or the other gateways. And then in comparison between, and I should have mentioned, the analysis that was done, really, as part of this precise plan and EIR, was looking at a very high level between two general locations, either the Charleston location or the La Vanita Crossing location. And in terms of transportation, the Charleston location was preferred, because you would be moving vehicle trips kind of away from Shoreline. They would be coming up, say, from some connection point at the light rail station, coming through here and going into North Bay Shore via the Charleston Road Transit Boulevard, which extends all the way through North Bay Shore, and they would be, and if they were going through the La Vanita Crossing, they would be having to go closer to Shoreline. So from a transportation perspective, you're moving the transit vehicles up into this area more efficiently and not getting congested at the Shoreline vicinity. And then also, from an alignment perspective, in initial conversations with actually both VTA and the federal agencies out here, an alignment is preferred that would go, kind of follow along this RT Jones Road up here, as opposed to having to come and bend around this complicated turning, turns right here, and also having to bisect the U.S. Army Reserve property. So for those two reasons, at a high level, again, the preference would be for Charleston Road connection point for a bridge, if EPC and council supports a bridge. From an ecological standpoint, maybe I'll ask, actually, Steve, if you wanted to come and kind of talk about the differences between either the Stevens Creek Bridge location or the La Vanita location.
You want to stand?
Sure. Stand up there.
Thanks, Martin. I'm Steve Rottenborn, wildlife ecologist with H.T. Hargan Associates. We've been assisting the city with the precise plan and the precise plan update, and we took a look at the two potential bridge locations, again, at a very high level. We know that much more detailed analysis would need to be done as part of feasibility studies, or once there's a specific proposal on the table. But just from a high level, we looked at the potential differences in impacts between a bridge at Charleston and a bridge at La Vanita, and we assumed for the sake of this, to compare apples to apples, that the same type of bridge would be built in both places. So we took a look at the, conceptually, the type of bridge that had been studied at Charleston back in 2012. This was a bridge that would span over, you know, over the levees on either side, would span over the creek, so it doesn't have structures down in the creek. So at Charleston, there would be no direct loss of sensitive habitats, again, because the bridge spans all the way over the creek. But the riparian corridor is a long, pretty continuous riparian corridor from a gap at La Vanita that I'll talk about in a minute, all the way down to where there's the transition from a woody riparian habitat, riparian woodland, to tidal brackish water habitat. So it's a pretty long stretch of pretty high-quality habitat, and so a bridge at Charleston would cross over that, so there would be some disturbance associated with just the use of the road, some shading of that riparian habitat that would occur. And it would essentially break the riparian corridor downstream from Highway 101 into three smaller segments. There's already a gap at La Vanita because of past vegetation management activities. So this would essentially break it up into, you know, a short segment of riparian habitat between 101 and La Vanita, and then one between La Vanita and Charleston, and then downstream from Charleston. This would also be closer to the downstream tidal habitats, and with sea level rise and variability in flows, you know, that transition from non-tidal freshwater to tidal brackish and salt marsh habitats, it can move up and downstream, and it's kind of an important area for the species that use the creek. So, so now, at La Vanita, there would be, the one drawback at La Vanita is that there's a little bit of riparian habitat that's up near the top of the western bank, right near the end of La Vanita. And so it's not really conceivable that the bridge would go so high over that that it wouldn't impact that. So there would be a small amount of direct impact to riparian habitats at La Vanita, and that would be the main difference in terms of direct habitat impacts. In terms of indirect impacts, though, there's already a gap in the riparian corridor. There's a continuous woodland upstream, continuous woodland downstream, but there's a gap there without any riparian habitat. And so the indirect impacts on riparian habitats, on riparian species, would be less at La Vanita than there would be at Charleston. And if the bridge crossed over at La Vanita, then you'd have a continuous, a large continuous riparian corridor going downstream all the way to the tidal habitats and continuing on down to the bay. So also, at La Vanita, the bridge crossing would be closer to 101, so it keeps those two disturbance elements pretty close to each other. And the bridge at Charleston also would pass, at least the approach to the bridge would pass closer to the egret colony that's there along Shorebird Way, so that's another difference. So in terms of the magnitude of the impact, these aren't impacts that we would say that they're really big impacts, these indirect impacts of Charleston. So the magnitude of the difference, in my opinion, isn't really great, but, you know, when we were asked to take a look at which would be preferred ecologically, a bridge crossing at La Vanita would have less indirect impact.
Less indirect impact.
Less indirect impact and a small amount of greater directed impact.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry, commission questions? Commission questions for Steve?
You're looking for us to, I mean, you know, which of these, if we decide to go with either of them tonight?
I was going to get to that, but I guess initially, are there any...
Clarifying questions?
Clarifying questions for Steve right now.
Just, do I understand, then, you know, that even though this is preferred, it sounds like, you're saying it's not a huge difference between the two?
It's not a huge difference. Those indirect impacts that we talked about, again, you know, in the IR it was high-level, but the indirect effects at Charleston, we didn't consider significant under sequoia.
Commissioner Barr.
So when you were doing this evaluation, you get into traffic exhaust. So I'm thinking if traffic is being backed up on 101 right next to the riparian corridor, wouldn't that affect the air quality? But if the bridge was further out, wouldn't that lessen the air quality concerns along 101? If you can get more cars away from 101, that increase the air quality, which could be a benefit.
I suppose if it helps the situation at 101, then it might be a benefit. But the types of species that use these habitats are more impacted by, first of all, by direct impacts, which again are small, La Vanita, and nonexistent there at Charleston, and then more by just the movement of cars, the movement of people, disturbance, that kind of thing, and indirect habitat impacts from shading, more than air quality.
Just one more question, back to Martin, I guess. You know, I remember when this came up, you know, it was five or six years ago at council, and there was a big thing, questions, you know, the first, second, third, and fourth most important things here are Stevens Creek Trail, that's why we don't want to build the bridge. Whatever, you know, okay, so leaving aside the soundbites, I mean, do you remember anything more about what was said from councils to why they opposed the bridge at that point, specifically?
At that point, there were, it was mostly concerns over the habitat. And just to put it into context, the reason we're bringing it back right now in this stage of the precise plan is because we're trying to, back then, there was no discussion of residential out in North Bay Shore. And so now we're trying to balance the objectives of residential and gateways and capacity, as well as issues of biological impacts.
Okay, thanks.
Just to clarify, is this...
Commissioner Ramirez.
Sorry. Is this staff initiated, or did the council direct staff to study this in the context of this EIR?
We specifically asked council if they wanted to study this policy, reengage on this policy issue of the Stevens Creek Bridge, and they directed us to.
So they initially shot it down, and then they reconsidered in this context?
Yeah, different council.
Right, okay.
Any other clarifying questions for Steve?
Commissioner May.
I have a quick question. So for the, going along the trail, there's already the bridge that exists, I guess, at the end of Critten, and I've been looking at my map, trying to figure it out. So that already exists, how long has that been constructed for now?
I don't know.
I mean, a long enough time period where the habitat has become accustomed to it, I would assume.
Right, but there's a big difference between the foot traffic and bicycle traffic on that bridge and a much wider bridge with vehicles going over.
So that bridge, I've seen, because I run and bike that trail all the time, I've seen vehicles going back and forth on there. I mean, obviously, it's like water district vehicles and things like that. Has there been any thought process about opening that up or widening that instead of creating a whole new bridge across? I know it's quite far back, but I don't...
Yeah, we've never...
I just know that that already exists.
That was studied in 2012, it was the Critten, Crittenon Bridge and Charleston Bridge were the two locations that were studied.
And the background on that is, sorry? That predates my time on commission, I think.
Sorry, we didn't study it as part of this, but in 2012, the species that might be impacted are a little different, because there, you're closer to the tidal marsh, very rare species like California Ridgeways Rail are either right there or very close. It's closer to wetlands, I believe the EAR had some wetland, direct wetland impacts from the approaches there. So the impacts are different, and you're closer to restored or restoration from the South Bay Salt Pond Restoration Project. It's, I think, most biologists would consider it more sensitive the farther downstream you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
You have a question?
Actually, just to follow on the topic of gateways, just to, again, this is one of the policy levers, so we're considering discussing Stevens Creek Bridge options, and we're also, as we previously displayed, this issue of the Charleston Underpass. So again, this graphic shows, this is an excerpt from the 2013 North Shoreline Transportation Study, which was looking at high-level strategies for how you might be able to increase capacity around North Bay Shore. So one option was to extend Charleston Road on this side of 101 to go underneath and to come up at Landings Drive right here. And just to clarify, in the staff report, it referenced this at San Antonio. This is actually Rangstorf, so just as a notification, this is Rangstorf, this is Highway 101, and North Bay Shore is right in here, and this is the Costco is right here, and here's Charleston Road. So apparently, back in the day, Charleston Road... apparently, back in the day, Charleston Road before 101 was built, it actually went across into North Bay Shore. But 101 was built, and so it was stopped right here except for the autograph. So the question really is, if you were to look at a gateway into North Bay Shore to increase capacity, this is one option. So that brings us to kind of the key questions, and these might have been modified just a little bit, but to try to really clarify the questions. But the question before the council, EPC, is should the plan include a policy supporting a Stevens Creek, either a transit-only bridge or potentially allowing carpools? Again, allowing carpools allows for more, greater vehicle capacity. And if the EPC does support a new bridge, should it indicate a preferred location at either Charleston Road or La Venida? It doesn't necessarily need to. The plan could just show conceptually that it could, either one could be okay pending further study or analysis. And then the question number four relates to the Charleston Road underpass. If the EPC supports an action item for feasibility study for that gateway. So again, two main questions relating to gateways.
So in terms of process, would you recommend taking the first part of question three individually? So Commissioner Barrett?
Okay, I support having the location be at Charleston. I think it would be better to get it further away from shoreline, intersection at 101, so that we don't have traffic backing up. And then I would expand the bridge to be also allowed for carpools, so that we can, A, encourage carpoolsing and B, increase capacity coming into North Bay Shore.
Commissioner Cox?
So I'm with Commissioner Barrett on this one. I agree with the idea of the transit bridge, even the possibility of extending it to carpools. But if it gets the capacity, I'd prefer buses over carpools. But in any case, yeah, I mean, it's a tough decision, but given the alignments and the ability to move the traffic in there, it seems much more feasible at Charleston, La Venida. And if it is a terrible impact, worse on La Venida, I think that's where we need to go.
Commissioner Caprellis?
I think to pursue the Stevens Creek Transit Only Bridge Crossing, before, I would support the carpools. I'd like to know what the impact would be on the environment around there. I think we're trying very hard as we try to build a community to really maintain the habitat that we have out there. And initially, it appears that the Charleston Road would be the preference. But again, I think feasibility study and the impact on the environment would make a difference as to which one I would choose. But it seems like the Charleston Run makes sense from what we now know. But if there's additional information that impacts the habitat, I would go with either.
Commissioner Barrett?
Also, support a bridge at Charleston. And I would support allowing carpools.
Commissioner Barrett?
Yeah, it's okay. I'll be the lone person on this one. So as I mentioned, I'm on this trail all the time. And I think it makes most sense for La Venida. Cars go up and park right up into that spot, so I think it makes most sense to have a crossing there. You know, people are on their bicycles, they're walking, and they're running along that trail. And I think that whether we look at Charleston or La Venida as crossing points, including transit and carpools, would really change the whole feel and makeup of that trail. You know, and the habitat obviously would be affected, which is also important. But just, just thinking about the community that's already existing on that trail is why I lean towards La Venida. That might make the most sense in terms of being non-disruptive to the trail users, whatever mode they're using, as well as it sounds like from a habitat point.
Any other thoughts, Commissioner? So I, I'm, I'd like sentiment with Commissioner Caprellis with a transit-only bridge, but I'd like to know a little bit more before going to a carpool option. I think Charleston makes the most sense to me, but in terms of figuring out whether or not carpool is appropriate, I'd like a little bit more information. So as I tally it, I think we have one, two, three votes in favor of the Charleston Crossing allowing for carpool, two supportive of Charleston with more information to study whether or not expansion to carpool makes sense, and one in favor of La Venida, with or without carpool?
I don't, I mean, I'm open to this.
Okay.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Question, oh, we got three and four. Speeding right along at 11:05.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm respectful, thank you.
Good try.
Sorry. Not intentional. I just read the Charleston Road Underpass. Question number four is, does the EPC support adding a precise plan action item for the Charleston Road Underpass? Struffle?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I wasn't that far off. We had to do the whole voting democracy thing.
Isn't that democracy thing? Geez. Really just-
Just a couple more. So just, again, the vehicle trip performance standard. The idea is that, like, the precise plan has a 45% SOV for office, you know, as a way to reduce trips. So the idea is that residential could have something similar, a requirement that new development would have a particular trip performance standard they'd have to meet in order to reduce overall trips. And that factor would be developed based on kind of the plan's housing types and more modeling from Dan. So the way this would work is, you know, a project would come forward and say, you know, here's my mix of units, this is my trip performance standard based on my units and my parking, what have you. And so we would compare that against the plan and to see how it could meet the standard. There would be flexibility for a project to comply with the trip performance standard. They could use their own suite of TDM measures to try to get as close as possible to that planned vehicle performance standard. And as it moved forward through the entitlement process, you know, depending on how close it was to the planned performance standard, you know, it could be, that difference could influence the project design or the suite of TDM measures, basically. And then, I'll talk about this later, but again, monitoring would be key to this, just like we're monitoring with the 45% SOV and TDMs, to really see how this actually works and plays out. We would have to have annual monitoring on that. So again, the question before the EPC, does the EPC support plan policy and action item regarding having a residential vehicle trip performance standard? And I should mention, though, that the idea is that we would not penalize residential if they didn't meet the trip performance standard. Right now, we have financial penalties in place for office that doesn't need it. But because of the other kind of benefits of having residential out in North Bay Shore, we would initially put in a financial penalty structure for projects that didn't meet this. However, we would ask them to modify their TDM program if they didn't meet it. That's kind of the draft thinking right now. But the question before the EPC is if they support that standard.
So many yes. Commissioner Cox?
Just a question of clarification, then. I mean, I don't, you see, what's not clear to me on this is, you know, if there's no penalty, I mean, you know, how does the data you're gathering influence what you do? Because there's no point in gathering it if it doesn't influence what you do, right? So I mean, does it influence, you know, the next time you look at a project of similar type of whether you're going to be favorable to it or not? Or, I mean, does it, is there a way of changing the behavior? You can say modify your TDM, but then again, if they don't do it and there's no penalty, then where's your leverage?
And that's where we are now. And certainly, if the EPC had comments on that, we're happy to take those and forward it on to the council. I think an important point is that with this idea of a performance standard and monitoring, is that that performance standard could change over time. As we got more multimodal out there, as we got different things going on, that performance standard perhaps could be changed and modified over time. So it's really a dynamic type of situation.
Commissioner Cox?
I think it's important that if we do have a residential vehicle trip performance standard, that there is a consequence. I mean, I think, you know, it's great to have a high-level idea of what you want to achieve, but everybody's got to have some skin in the game somehow, some way. If it isn't financial, it's something else. And right now, I'm not thinking well, but it's okay. It's after 11. But it's one of those things where we do need to figure it out, because then there's no incentive. If it's like, oh, just fix up your TDM program, could you imagine that? No, that wouldn't, no. I think we've got to be a little bit more stringent when we come to saying what is the consequence to that. So I agree that we should have it, but as far as consequences, I really am inclined to agree with Commissioner Cox, that we've got to have some kind of incentive for people to perform to that. Otherwise, they won't.
Commissioner Barrett?
So I'm wondering on the demand management programs, if there's some other way that we could encourage residential uses to have, for lack of a better term, shuttles that would be specific for that residential complex. Let's say you've got 300 apartment units, and you would have a regular shuttle that would be only for that development. And it would go over to the Safeway over on shoreline, and it would go downtown and run at 1:00 in the morning. So if somebody wanted to go downtown and argue, they could come home. So that you would end up having a different way for people to be able to get around and not have to have a car. So I don't know if there's some way that we can encourage, or the city can encourage, and have that be part of a community benefit, that you have to provide transportation for the people living in your residences. And that's part of what you do for the city.
So that could be something that individual projects, you know, could offer up or could be required. But again, this North Bay Shore area is kind of an experiment unfolding. And one of the things that is taking place now is the TMA is considering this idea of residential out there, and how can the shuttles out there complement and use it? So there's still more work to be done on that. But the idea is that the shuttles that are going into bringing workers in could be used going out for residential. So there's more discussions on that taking place.
So I would be in favor of some sort of performance standard, but I would also want to have lots of benefits that would be provided so that, I guess, a reverse incentive rather than penalizing a developer, the developers incentivized at the very beginning of the project rather than afterwards.
Yes, you? Commissioner Barrett?
Yeah, yes. Support adding a, yes.
Commissioner Barrett? 11:15, yes.
We're good. I think you'd say so.
Yes.
With the caveats that she talked about on our leasing ourselves.
Can you state those caveats one more time?
Well, I mean, you know, I think that, I think there needs to be something in this that, you know, if some goal is not met, it triggers some action. Okay? Either in terms of, you know, what's going to happen with the next proposal, puts it into service or other, or that, you know, something is required of, you know, the people who are in the existing complex. I mean, I'm a little bit nervous on it, because, I mean, you know, now you think about the idea of, okay, well, if there's a penalty, then, you know, you're going to put it against their rent? And, you know, I mean, that's kind of moving in the opposite direction of what we're hoping for, right? But still, I mean, there needs to be, you know, there needs to be something.
Some kind of consequence.
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple more. This last idea is, again, just trying to think of things, as many things as possible, that could result in potentially more residential units out in North Bay Shore. So decreasing the current single occupancy vehicle rate for office development. Right now, it's at 45%. Again, the city is already kind of giving the green light to a number of bonus at-the-are projects, new office projects, and kind of the assumption is that those would be complying with that 45% current rate. So it may be kind of challenging to now go back and change the rules of the game for those projects. The idea is that if you maybe lowered the SOV rate for office, you could potentially shift some capacity over to residential. In general, that's the idea. Again, last point, feasibility, it may be difficult right now to even go further than 45%. We currently are not hitting that right now with our measurements in North Bay Shore. And maybe in the future, it would be easier to lower that, but right now, feasibly, it might be difficult. So that's kind of the policy question there, is if the EPC supports a precise plan action item to study that feasibility of reducing SOV rates for office.
What's the-
What are they achieving now?
Right now, it's, we're just, we just did the measurements in March. We don't have the data now, but the previous, was it 50, 50 to 55 range, yeah?
Yeah, so they're within 10%. So would we say then, reducing the SOV rates for new offices?
I mean, that could be-
Because I think your comment that you can't set one rate, you know, that we've already established, and people are working toward achieving that. If you wanted to reduce it, you've got to, you know, I don't know if that even makes sense. I'm not making a lot of sense.
Cam, looks like he has some information that could inform our conversation. So let's pause for just a minute. Commissioner Barrett?
I don't see any harm in studying the feasibility of reducing SOV rates. It may not be possible, but we're anticipating a great number of transportation improvements in that area, and some that are probably more speculative, like, you know, a light rail extension, automated gateways, and all of that. And so it may be achievable, but, you know, we won't know unless we study it.
Can I just clarify? This feasibility study would be done by city staff or consultant? Or, because we know how much resources and extra time city staff has.
Exactly.
It would be staff working, but a consultant would definitely be retained.
Yeah.
Commissioner Barrett?
I support it.
I guess I'd really want to know what specifically somebody can do beyond what's being done now to actually reduce it, because, I mean, we're not close. So I honestly, it seems to me that without some major transportation improvement, like, you know, things like I say, light rail, extension, automated gateway, guided transit, you know, I mean, some other kind of, you know, these things that you're talking about. I mean, it doesn't seem feasible for me to go down. So I'll just put no on it for now.
Similar to what Commissioner Barrett says, I don't see the harm in studying.
So I think we have four in favor of studying it, and one, one no. And then I kind of fall in, I'm in favor of studying it, but I just, I'm still- but I just, I'm still concerned about staff resources.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, it's down with us.
I think it's down their priority list.
Is that fair? Those who are in favor of studying this caution that this is lower on the priority list for staff.
Let's get to 45 first, didn't we?
Exactly. They've got 10%, the go.
Okay, then the last two, congestion pricing. Again, this is in the Precise Plan as a last resort strategy, really. If all the other TDMs we have been thinking about and implementing kind of failed to get us to where we need to go. It would involve charging motors at the gateways as you enter North Bayshore. Revenues from such a program could be used for multimodal improvements. So the question is if the EPC would want to entertain a feasibility study. Again, as another action item. Again, when this was brought up during the Precise Plan process, there was some concern about if this is the right time for this to happen in North Bayshore. Some concern from some of the companies out there about this. So as part of this, there would need to be quite a bit of community outreach to get that input on this. But really, the question is, does EPC support an action item to do a feasibility study? Again, with all these other items, the idea is these are things that can help potentially add more residential units. So that's the question before you.
Commissioner Cox?
So I'll take this one over the other one.
So, okay.
I think this is more important to study than trying to reduce the 45%.
Commissioner Cox, excuse me, Commissioner Ramirez, your support, Mr. Hough?
Yes.
Okay. So congestion pricing, we have 2 for congestion pricing, feasibility study above no. So let's, I know we're getting late into the night, but let's verbalize.
I just don't think it's something that is critical, right? It, you know, there's so many other things that we're looking at. It just doesn't make sense to put that on the list of studies, so.
I am torn on this. I agree with Commissioner Cox's assessment. But I don't know if we're ready to go there. So I don't know if we'd be studying something that would be very complicated to implement. And I don't know how much a study costs. But if it's $500,000 to study this, I would say no. So I, it's hard for me to say without knowing what the study costs and what the staff time is. But I, it would be interesting, but I don't know if it's worth the time at this point.
Commissioner Ramirez?
So do you have a proposed timeframe for this? In other words, if we put this on the plan as an action item, that doesn't mean we have to do it this year or next year. It's just something that we would consider at a time when it's appropriate.
Correct.
Because I wouldn't want to study it this year either. You know, it's a tool in a toolbox.
So Commissioner Barrett and Commissioner Ramirez, I'm not hearing a yes or a no, but a yes, but a lower priority?
Way lower priority.
And Commissioner Caprellis is a no? Or?
Well, it's the time and the resources. I just don't think it's realistic right now to spend the time.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I could see doing it in 2 years. Not right now. But I mean, I really think that at some point, it's good to have a discussion about it and some community outreach. I mean, there's different ways of approaching it.
Can we just say in the, you know, in the future, when resources?
Okay.
When resources allow, something like that.
When we, yeah, I was just going to say, when we discussed it, when we were crafting the North Bayshore Precise Plan and we talked about congestion pricing, I thought we made it quite clear, at least with that commission, that this was a last resort. And so I still feel kind of wedded to that sentiment that we had when the commission first looked at it, which is, you know, last resort. I know that they're doing it in cities like London. But, you know, I'd like to think that we're not London yet in North Bayshore.
So the consensus I'm hearing is that the commission is generally supportive of studying congestion pricing, not in the immediate future, as potentially a last resort. But it is something that should be included in the Precise Plan as a lower-level action item.
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Yeah. Okay. Then the last policy question, again, monitoring. Again, all of these modelings that we've done, the assumptions, estimations, that's all they are. We're not going to really know how all this works until we actually build the improvements and we actually measure the success of the TDM. So this is really asking if we want to have a strong draft plan policy that says, yes, we will do district transportation performance monitoring. We'll do an annual report, annual monitoring. We'll look at how the gateway performs. We'll look at how all the TDM plans are being implemented. And we'll also, you know, take perhaps surveys of residents out there to find out more about their travel behavior. Do they take a car? When do they travel? That kind of thing. So that's the question before the EPC.
Can I ask one clarifying question for a second? I know who we're all there. But at this point, do we need to, how is this funded? Is it through the TMA, the monitoring? Who bears the cost?
So currently now, so I didn't mention, but the idea is that we could fold this work into the annual trip cap work that we do. So it would be funded by the city.
Okay. So, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamai?
Yes. 6-0.
We can't set standards if we're not going to measure it.
Commissioner Cox?
I just had one, two cents thing I wanted to say before you close, Brian. I mean, just a comment.
Sure.
Okay, the one thing that I haven't seen, that I would like to see a discussion of this relative to parking is, you know, we have a lot of these, you know, we have residential parking, but we also have corporate parking. And I, you know, there's a shared opportunity there. And I'd like to see that fleshed out more. I mean, in particular, I mean, you know, most people are going to go home at night if they're not working there. And that leaves empty spaces there that, you know, residents coming back in might be able to park it. And I think that could help a lot with respect to, you know, solving the parking problem. Like, we need more detail, kind of more along the lines of this other stuff in terms of being able to do something with that. And we need to talk about, we need to talk to the companies about if they're willing to open those spaces. And since we're talking about charging for parking, you know, how much would they charge? And how do they feel about the security? And all that kind of thing. So I just think we need a broader, broader look into that because I think there's part of a solution there. That's my last comment.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I support it.
Okay.
Any other comments from the commission? Then I'd just like to say thank you to the public for staying with us for so long and our consultants.
Will you take any comment on the last stuff that we haven't had opportunity to comment? I have a couple of quick things to toss in about questions that came up.
Sure.
So in terms of what do you do in terms of a TDM if somebody is not meeting the goal? The way the City of San Mateo handles it in the rail corridor plan area, Hayward Park to Hillsdale, is that they say, okay, when you're doing your TDM, you have a menu of options and you need to do a bunch of them. And then if you're not in compliance, then you add some harder things. So, and then you, if you're still not in compliance, you do some more stuff. And then eventually, there's penalties. So the goal is to work together to keep making the plan better until you reach the shared goal. So that could be approached, that Mountain View, that would address the concern about not being punitive, but approach it in iterative and problem-solving manner. The idea about shared parking is, I think, a good way to handle if there's a potential phase-in of the lower parking requirements, that you have, you know, some of the parking be like less convenient and shared and then can be repurposed over time. Hang on, I just now shut my ears down. Let me cut that. Oh, and the one lever that was not here being looked at was internalization and whether there's policy choices like not requiring but favoring people who work nearby. And if that can increase the internalization rate from that 27% to more like 33% and 35%. That would also help in terms of less out commuting if it's possible to favor people who work nearby but not requiring, which would have a legal issue to my understanding. That's it.
I'll just be really quick. I just want to thank you for not doing the binary choice.
You're welcome.
And I think you had some very thoughtful comments. And if it wasn't 11:30, it would have been nice to kind of now come back to kind of putting this all together, kind of now we've had a vision where we take this. But it's 11:30, so I don't think you're going to do that.
Thank you again for sticking with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a special thanks to us, back from our colleagues. We have one more item on our agenda, which are other committee reports. Commissioner Cox?
Don't forget Saturday's the parade.
So I'm afraid I know Commissioner Ramirez and myself and Commissioner Hammer are unable to attend.
I'm going to be there.
So I will let Commissioner Caprellis, Kamai and Barrett, you can check in with Terry.
Listen through this.
Yep.
Commissioner Cox.
And Commissioner Cox, I'm sorry.
Of course.
Um, yes.
As far as attendance, I went to the High Speed Rail meeting last week.
Okay, so we're still meeting, hang on.
I went to the High Speed Rail meeting last week. And it was interesting to hear about that. But in any case, there's nothing really reported other than that it was an interesting meeting.
Anything else from the commission? Seeing now comments, I am adjourning our meeting today on the 19th at 11:31 PM.